I call the meeting to order for the council's August 2018 meeting. Before we stand for the invocation, I'd like to say that Mr. Willie Glanton, a member of council, is not here. His sister passed away. He's with his family in New York. We ask that you remember him and his family in your prayers. And before you leave, members, we have a card for us to sign, and Ms. Bundy has already sent a floral spray on our behalf to the family in New York. Mr. Woods?
Oh, grace of heaven, Father, we come to pray tonight with heavy hearts and open mind and willing desire. Father, we pray that you be with us, continue also stay focused and send our decision, you know, one accord and make my world kind of better place to live and play. Father, we come together in all our everything due in five treble action or who put our hand here on this, Lord. Father, give us our best, at your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Approval of agenda items? Any changes, additions or deletions? Hearing non, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as printed for tonight's meeting.
For move second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the agenda as printed. All in favor, let it be non by raising your right hand. Thank you. We have two presentations for this evening. The first is the victim's advocate grant to the PD Coalition.
It's going to be white. I said, of course, it's still going to be white.
If you go, when you leave, if you go when the sun's down, you can't see it during the day, but it looks bad. And so if they, yeah, we did it for the body. It's all part of the whole project we're doing to get everything sp- spooked up.
All right, we have another bid.
Yep. We also put, we're going to paint the exterior of the detention center. Locklear painting and construction was forty-five thousand, six sixty-eight. E and D construction from Savannah, Georgia was eighty-six thousand. And Henley construction out of Sherawth was fifty-four, so we, staff recommends we accept Locklear for that one also. And we're also going to change the signs out front. I know there's been some issues with the signs. We're going to try to do it in the same manner we did Wade H. Prince sign out in Blenheim. We're going to try to make it so it's this kind of uniform throughout the county.
Exactly. Thanks. Appreciate that. All right. Questions, comments?
Move that subtle bit, Locklear's painting.
All right, it's been moved in second that we accept the recommendation of staff for the painting and signage at the detention center. All in favor, let it be non by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. All right. For Mr. Boards and Commissions?
I have one, Doc. Wade H. Prince.
Let him, we're going to make it-
May I be heard? Let me do this first?
Yeah, presentation first. Yeah. You brought us some help. Glad you prepared anyway.
Yeah, you ready to go out of the gate? I always find to have a cheat sheet, good thing. So I made y'all something, a cheat sheet with all kinds of pretty colors on it.
I see that.
Everything to keep all of our attention. So let me explain what this, what this means, okay? And I know it's big, but that's how it had to be. Everything on this that's in yellow is someone who's serving on a board, appears to want to continue serving on a board, but their time expired and we just never reappointed them. So the yellow folks, you should look at and see, okay, do I want that person to be my appointment? And if you do, they're willing to serve. The red, or whatever color that is, coral, I guess ladies would call it, those are vacancies, or there are a couple of cases where someone was moved out of the district or quit going to the meetings or whatever. So those are where you have somebody, nobody, and so it's wide open. What we're asking you all to do is to look through these and make sure, or do your best to find someone to fill it so we'll have full boards. Boards like the library board are very important because the librarian and all of her staff work for that board. They do not work for the county administrator and are the county council. So you want to make sure you have folks there that set your policy. Everything's going great there, but it's just what, the way it works. Couple other quick things. You have to keep in mind when you look at potential folks to a point that you, there's a dual office holding provision. So no one that holds an offer, an office of honor or profit says in the constitution can hold two offices. Now, what's an office? A magistrate couldn't be on a board because they've been appointed by an elected official. I couldn't be on a board because I'm appointed. Ms. Bundy couldn't be on the board. Stuff like that. And I made examples on this, this note sheet. We had some cases in the past where we had folks on here that were on something else. You can't, you can't do that. In fact, the law says that if you, like if one of y'all took an appointment to a board, you've abandoned your, your prior position, and you don't want to do that. And then if you look down below, I won't go through them, but for every board on here, about every board on here, it gives you some rules, like for the airport, the people you appoint have to live in your district. But then for other boards, that person may not have to live in your district. So if you really couldn't find anybody, and you knew somebody really good that would look after what you want, you could put them on certain boards. So that's it in a nutshell. I can answer any questions. I would ask that, look at it, and of course, it's your prerogative, but try to get something going here next month or the next and get it, get it good and clean for the first of the year.
Other than the planning commission, are there any workshops or certifications needed? I know the planning commission has an annual videotape presentation that they have to do that remain on the board.
That's the biggest one, and that's one of the most difficult we have to fill. It requires continuing education. Now, what we've done is, we can bring everybody in for a meeting and have it over the internet and feed everybody so it makes it, you know, people can come and work while they're eating. It may be that council considers with some of these technical boards like that, even have an expense reimbursement, like cog board or something. So, you know, you get a little something. Very important board, and needs to have the right folks on it.
I think we get more issues about planning and land use and accounting than the other boards. Dogs running loose and things like that.
There's one, like I want to, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit, but you look at the fire board, you have Donald Hamilton serving in District Eight. Donald Hamilton lives in District Seven, not to bring up the election stuff that's going on this week. You know, everything turns into something else, you know. So if you have a question about anything, or if you come to us with someone that you're not sure, we'll make sure they live where they're supposed to, and they're not a convicted felon or whatever, or not on two boards, we can help you with that. Any other questions?
All right. Mr. Woods, you have an appointment?
Yes, I do. Our current commissioning of recreation around the Ingram, what Job scared had, had to be removed off of it. And I talked to a young man there, Ivor, I-V-O-R, Miles. I spoke with him today, and he's willing to take on that task as the Recreation Commissioner of CLIO. He's, you know, he, we're unable to work. So that would not be a problem with Job and so forth. So I talked to him, I told him, you know, we'd show him, you know, we'll take his hand and walk him through it. We wouldn't just abandon him. So he willing to give us a try. So I make a recommendation that we allow Ivor Miles to be commissioned for CLIO.
Motion, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve your appointment of Mr. Miles to the CLIO Recreation, to represent CLIO in the Recreation Committee. All in favor, let it be non by raising your right hand. Thank you. Mrs. Moore?
Ms. Moore has had some time off, and I told her I would step in for her. I'm not near as appealing as she is, but the report's brief. They're working with the auditor, it's that time again, and we're just one year into the new year, so it's not really a financial report. Everything looks good from the previous year, no issues yet, and hopefully not going to be. So you'll hear more soon as they get to doing their audit work.
All right.
And then I have the administrative report. As, as we do every month, we'll recognize folks with more than five years of service. This year Clara Brock's, this month Clara Brock, seven years. Emery Hughes, Keith Hughes, I guess that's Keith Hughes. This is like being in school when they call your name in homeroom and you don't know exactly who that is. So Keith Hughes' name is Emery K. Hughes, six years. Tonya Jackson, twenty-one years. Kathy Leggett, thirty-one years. Sharon Sanders, seven years. LaShawn Wheeler, sixteen years. Sandy Wilk's, twenty-four years. And Nehemiah Williams, twenty-two years. As far as upcoming events, we have Industry Appreciation Day coming up on Thursday the thirteenth. It'll be, start with a lunch at the Marlboro Country Club, and then followed by a golf tournament. Mr. Woods, I hope you're going to have your team of ringers out there this year.
I will.
Okay. We missed you last year. And then there'll also be a dove hunt for folks that don't, that do not want to play golf. And this year, after all that's over with, at four, we're going to come back to the country club. Last year, we lost folks between the two places. Folks go home after they play golf and don't want to come back. And we'll have a, you know, mingling and reception to let industry folks and all mingle with everyone. It's all focused on industry and business and partnership members, and if you're hopefully able to attend, let Ms. Bundy know, and we'll get you on the list, and golf stuff, you can get to Ms. Brandy, and we'll get you hooked up with that. Economic development report, the Bowldore Project is still alive. I, you know, I feel like I've been talking about it for eight months, but it is still moving along. They had a change in staff with the folks on the other end, and that's all good, and they're working with the state on the state incentives. So hopefully, we want to see something happen in September, and that's the indication. That's what they indicate will happen. With the Delta Project, we, staff went and met with DEHEC. That's always fun. It's about like going to the doctor. But it went well, and we had our attorney, our environmental attorney, Steve Weber. Y'all know Steve. He went with us. And DEHEC is very excited that we're involved in this because they know we'll be responsible and do what we need to do. And they will be pushing for cleanup, but we had anticipated that and have been planning accordingly. So we're meeting to discuss demolition of parts of the complex and then have a formal plan here soon. As far as economic development prospects, folks looking at the county, we've had a drought, and then all of a sudden, it rained this week. So we had two prospects in fifteen days. One was just an inquiry, you know, you get those. But the other one was pretty serious and a little farther down the line, and really has potential to, to locate here. So we're excited about that. We shared a packet of information, literally that thick this afternoon with them. And, and so we're, we're excited about that. As far as administrative report, the first thing I added on here, it's not on the sheet you have, is the bus project for transporting people around the county is moving along really fast. And I took what you all approved last time, and went back to the group, and that was the piece, puzzle piece they needed. And now I have the funding in place to do a bus that'll take people to the doctor's office and that sort of thing, and the part we need, which is to haul people to work. It's a great thing here because we have a tremendous number of folks that aren't in the workforce. Some of them can't get to work. Now we'll have a way to do that. And we met yesterday, I think, would have to be yesterday, with the city of Bennettsville, with the mayor and administrator about their participation. And they apparently took it to the workshop, and the mayor was in support of it, and the council was. And they'll take it to their official meeting next week, but all indications are that they're going to contribute ten thousand dollars towards this. County contribution is budgeted at thirty thousand, and when we met last, I said thirty to fifty. So next meeting, I'll bring the real details for you all to look at and vote on. But, you know, just sometimes I think good things fall, fall together. You know, you kind of get cynical after a while, but it really seems to have happened with this case. We're excited that Market Street, Hospital Hill, retaining wall is almost done, and I am sure the contractors working on that are tired of it because every seven inches or ten inches, they're having to pack that dirt down so the whole city of Bennettsville doesn't slide down the hill. And the good thing is, by the way we did it, by building a wall off of the old wall and not tearing the old wall down, we saved three hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if y'all remember, three or four years ago, we had a quote from Tech, I mean Tech Cog for three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars or something like that. This was under fifty. So let's, we should be through this week, I think. We, it's not in the specs to paint it, and the city, Bicentennial Committee called me today, Elizabeth McNeil, and they're interested in painting a mural on it. So I was like, well, there you go. That saves us money and also will look good. So I asked her to put that in writing and all that and bring it back to you all, but that sounds like a good idea, I think. We, we have, we've been advertising in the newspaper about extended hours at the solid waste convenience centers, you know, the trash sites, and you'll notice that. I think you ran it, Mr. Carabo, for five, four, five, four weeks?
Rest of the month.
Rest of the month, okay. And you see it on here. Basically, Red Hill will be open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from ten to six, and on Saturdays from nine to one. Wallace will be open Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to six, and Saturdays nine to one. McCall will be open Thursdays, Fridays from ten to six, and Saturdays nine to one. And Blenheim will be open on Wednesdays from noon to four. This isn't set in stone. We've got to see how it goes. We may have to tweak it some more. Trash coming into those sites is really increasing, as we might have expected. We bought a compactor for Red Hill where we can squish the trash and not haul air, and we're going to do that for Wallace next, probably. So we'd appreciate your feedback as you hear it in the community, Mr. Carabo or me, and we'll tweak it as we go.
Do there be signs up at the sites for the sale of these? Where about, is it at? At Wallace site?
It's right in front, right at, as you're out.
Okay.
You have to actually go in and see.
Well, I didn't see it today. That's why I was, I didn't see it.
Yeah. We may need to look at that. You're right. Okay. So that's that. I did want to touch on something that probably I shouldn't touch on, but this county seems to have been dragged into it yesterday, and that's the controversy about election districts with the school board. You know, there's been some controversy about it and some confusion as to what the official lines are and where they changed, and that sort of thing. And I just want to make it clear for the public to hear, that every ten years, county council approves a redistricting map, that then goes to the state and is approved, and then goes to the U.S. Department of Justice and is approved. Other than that, county council doesn't change district lines, and hasn't changed district lines. The last time it happened was in December of 2011. Apparently, the local voter registration office uses Marlboro County's 911 and GIS maps to help them find the right lines, or to find out where you live. You know, that's nothing we've told them to do, and those maps, the maps, the 911 maps, have nothing to do with the official district lines, nothing. The 911 maps and the GIS maps are changed sometimes daily by our staff when somebody moves a trailer in, or buy the house, or whatever. They, that's not approved by council, it's not approved by me. It's what we do every day, it's part of our work. And again, it has no bearing on where someone lives in a district. I also want to say, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but I want to say it, that the people that work in the voter registration office don't work for me and don't work for you. They work for the, they're appointed by a board that's appointed by the legislative delegation. So anybody wants to call me about how to fix something, they need to call someone else. And, and you know, I want to say also to close out, that it's been six years since the district lines were changed in 2012. I sat, sat where y'all sit, and we voted on it. And they're still not correct on the voter registration rolls. Now, yesterday, I had a lot of communication with people at state because they sent out an email and made it sound like we had something to do with it. And the local board has admitted that they made, not board, but staff has admitted they made a mistake in the controversy. Things happen. But it's my opinion that, you know, hopefully other people's opinions, that these things need to be corrected. You know, I know in the district race that Mr. Woods ran, and Mr. Blackman ran, there were over a hundred folks on the list I saw that were in the wrong district on Hebron Dunbar Road. It needs to get changed. And I think the other, last issue I want to say is, I'm not sure that the state agency provides the proper level of support to our local board and people to fix these things. We're a small, poor county. They, just like anything else, they dump a load on us, and they don't give us any, any help. And I just implore anyone involved in this, or with any influence or, you know, power, to let's get this fixed. You know, I wasted my whole day yesterday on this. You know, so, you know, it's my job, but it wasn't my job to get requests from the NAACP, and the this, and the this and that, because somehow the county had done, had anything to do with it. You know, so maybe it wasn't appropriate to say that, but I felt like I needed to say that.
No, it's appropriate because there are a lot of rumors circulating about A to Z on this issue. And I'm thankful that you are making the clarification for council members, for people sitting here, people watching us, and for the press, because we want to make it perfectly clear. Usually, I don't get phone calls because my district is the city. I've got some house visits and some phone calls, which is fine. So yes, your comments are appropriate. So, and I think you gave us a copy of a letter-
I did.
That outlines everything that we can read, and you can have response for people that still calling you about this.
I did respond to, in particular to the NAACP. We have an excellent relationship with them, and Ms. Lawson responded back in a favorable way. You know, when things go wrong, people, not the NAACP, but everyone involved reaches out to find somewhere to blame and all, and somehow or another, we got into, we don't have anything to do with it.
Well, the county gets blamed for a lot of things. We're going to get credit for the good things we're doing.
I can answer any other questions if you want.
Any questions about this issue, comments?
And I've become an expert on this. So if you have any questions, you can call me or come by.
You can't charge us an extra fee for this. All right. Okay. Thank you. That's an unfortunate situation, and I agree that it needs to be resolved and fixed sooner rather than later. We had no one to sign up for our recognition for council, so now we'll go to council. You want to start first, Mr. Odom? Thank you.
Yes, I'll start. Again, like I said, I did everybody keep willing in prayers and everything. Sometimes, some things, this family, you know, he's a back of heart of this community, and also this county, and I said, we just need to keep him in our prayers. Also, I lost a friend of mine, we got on the school with twelve years, last Tuesday. John Mathi, his mother, toddler in Marlboro County School System, I think about forty years, probably just found everybody in this room. And, you know, keep them in your prayers too. They're going to have a memorial, a burial at the Mathi Cemetery this Saturday at twelve, at two o'clock. Just keep the Mathi family. I think Mrs. Mathi is about ninety-two years old, and she, like I said, she's taught at these schools for probably, I think, pretty sure, close to forty years. And other than that, things are doing pretty well. Working with Mr. Carabo on shooting rain, doing some kind of, glad to get that kind of issue behind us. And that will help, really, I was wanting to go to Marlboro County, I think, better to use it. And the touch on the voter registration office, I think Ron is right. The state hands out a lot of stuff to the Marlboro County Election Commission, and Lord, they do a tremendous job. I just don't think they get the help or support from the state that they need to get these things straightened out. And, you know, it takes us coming up with something to help them. I think that's what we need to do because, you know, they provide a valuable service, and they touch just about every family in this county. And we need to make, I feel like give them a little bit more support than we did. That's it.
I'd just like to echo everything Mr. Odom said, and several people mentioned the land in there, at Blue Hawk, right there, at the Blues Land in there. And everybody's excited about it, and I believe it's going to be good for the community, and everything looks good. It's been done. I noticed, I went down there, and the river come up, everything staying in place, looks like. So that's a good thing, you know. So I just want everybody to know that I appreciate it, and getting a lot of calls, and it looks like the citizens appreciate it too.
I had a few phone calls about, about the forest and the medians on Highway Nine. So you know, it hides the trash whenever the grass is high, but whenever they cut it, you can see it everywhere. So I don't know, maybe we can write a letter to the state and see if there's something they can do for, you know, I told the gateway to, in our state through here, everybody going to the beach. I mean, so see if we can maybe get it cut a couple of extra times or something for two or three county or whatever. But, you know, it's just, I've noticed there's a lot of times, it's getting dangerous now to try to cross the intersection, you know. One thing for just a grove, or whenever it becomes, you know, a safety problem, I mean, it's maybe the state will look interested in cutting it once or twice more throughout the year.
I'd like to commend Ron on his fire service presentation at Hillhead Island Convention, and his work to lower the insurance rates with the ISO rates. And that's going to directly affect our citizens in this community. And also, his work on the voter registration issue. Thank you to all of that.
I'd like to commend also on John well done with the presentation at Hillhead. Also, I would like to say that the, I had a couple of people that called me about the street, Sherawth Street running into Main Street, the light. It's a very rough place right there. And they was asking me, will the state go and fix it? Well, I know the state are doing a lot of paving and stuff, so I'm hoping that they're going to get that area-
I've got that covered. Yes, ma'am. It's got that covered.
You got it. Good. All right. Good. And they called me about that. So the next time I talk to them, I'm saying, Ms. Prince, she got it covered. Pass it on.
Call her up. She took your words.
Pass it on. Yeah, I'm going to. But also, I called Mr. Glanton, and he was in very good spirits. And he was telling about his highest sister passed and everything. And he says, if he was going to go anyway, he would want to go that way peaceful. And she went to sleep and didn't wake up, and that's a very peaceful way to go. So he was in good spirits, and we told him that. We was thinking about him, and we praying for him and his family. We did talk about that. Also, I had another woman talked about. Also, I had another lady that called me, and she was asking me, she was, Miss Plato, said, I wonder, could you help me with a problem I have? I said, well, if I can. She said, the police department, can you help me with telling them about getting somebody hired and keeping them with an actual type of money that they're raising, they paying them too much, too low on pay? Say, can you, I said, lady, I said, I think you're talking to the wrong person. So I couldn't tell that lady, you know, I couldn't, I didn't know what to tell her. You know, how can I tell her that I'm going to go to the chef and say, chef, you need to hire people and pay them more money? I can't do that.
There you go.
That's why I was talking loud. I'm looking over.
I think you just did.
But that's the only issue I have. But other than that, everything else is going good. I had a couple of people also run, they called and asked me, when are we going to have another cleanup?
All right.
They are interested in that.
We're going to let snakes go up under the rocks first.
Let it get cool.
In the fall, let it get cool.
It has to be, because I had some young folks before, and I'll tell you the truth, they ran me ragged, and I was tired. So I wanted to be cool. But other than that, I think that's, that's about all. And we had a good time at Hillhead and enjoyed everything. So that's about all I have to say. Mr. Reverend Woods.
No, I'm calling up there. No, no. I got two to fathom. I got two to fathom. I got two paths of woods to fathom. I'll hold you through it right now. Anyway, we're out of the district. I've been getting some calls, as everybody would know, being a representative of eight. And we met with our team this last night, and some other members, tried to put a handle on this situation and kind of talk it out. So I think when we left, everything was better. I assure them, wherever you heard that the county council, I've been here on council for twelve years, never miss a meeting. I said, now, if they had a meeting without me, I said, but we don't, we do not touch the lines. And if that were the case, every council, every member they send would make sure they get everybody, their family, in their district. You know, so, you know, if I would draw a line out laughing, I'm going to cut my family out my own line. So, but anyway, after that, and we talked, and our team has discussed what he going to do, what he may not do. But at the end of the day, I think we got everything under control. Is, everything can be a corrective error. You know, we all human, we all make mistakes. On the latter side, on the eighteenth, which is Saturday, Alicia McCray and Mark MacLeod and J.D. Barbershop, they having a bash of giving out supplies and free haircuts, and some beauticians doing some- doing some girls hair for free, and from, I think from 10 to 2, in Clayo. Yeah, in Clayo. So that's, you know, it's school time, so, and they're like free haircut, and moms and dads can kind of save a little bit of money, get that free haircut in. But the best news, the best news, I'm gonna tell y'all today.
It's the 18th.
Yes, the 18th. On January, no, August 14, 1916, 102 years ago, my grandma was born. And today, she celebrated her birthday.
Wow.
And the Woods family is ecstatic, just to have someone in our presence, you know, to have five generations. We had a gathering Saturday, and as a 102-year-old lady, she knew everybody who came in there, can call their name out. And she had, I mean, five generations were there. And, you know, we just were full of joy and longevity that no matter what anybody would have done today, he couldn't put a dark cloud on our family today, because she is all backbone, she's our queen, she's our shining star. And that's all I gotta say.
All right. I have a couple of reports, I'll keep it brief. One thing that stood out to me at Hilton Head, you've often heard me talk about the local government fund. One of our sessions had six legislators that made presentations, and a couple of them said that the formula that they voted on about 10 years ago would not be honored as written, that the counties need to be realistic about and creative in finding other sources of, to generate money from industry, which is difficult for us to do, but we're making a dent into it. We heard from our administrator, we're getting new industry and additional interests, so we're always hopeful. But one thing to help people understand the predicament, there's a certain amount of what we call unfunded mandates, things that the state says we have to provide, we have to do. So Mr. Monahan, would you ask the finance department to make a list of all the unfunded mandates and the amount of money, maybe for last year's budget or this year's budget, that we devote to that, and then translate that into the mileage, so that we can see, it may be $2 or $3 million that we could devote to things for our county that we can't, because we have to pay for things that the state is obligated to give us our tax money back. The second, and this is important too, the 2020 census is coming up, and the federal government will provide less money to hire people to do the count, they do the mail-in, but they want to come back physically because we know historically, a lot of communities are not reported, so the numbers are very important. We were told that based on the 2020 census, the number of people, the money that you get for different services and programs is going to increase between 14 and 15 percent. So we want our numbers to be as accurate as possible. So I've been talking to some people about getting some community-based organizations, I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, whether it's communities, churches, or whatever. We want to make sure that our numbers are as high as they should be. So you'll hear more from that later. The paving for Jennings Street is completed. I think I reported before that the Transportation Committee, the COG, PD COG, the other road that will be paved, and they'll start soon, will be West Main Street from the intersection of Chirrell Street, which is Highway 9 business, all the way west down to the end where it merges with the bypass, 15401. So when I said that intersection, I had that covered, COG's got that covered, okay? They're writing a paycheck for that, not Carol. The bus project, that's a godsend for our community. We always talking about the issues with transportation in rural counties, and the acceptance and the level of support from the DOT, all the services they're going to provide to help make that happen, I'm grateful for that, and the fact that they are committed for three years. You can't decide if something's gonna work or not, you can't tweak it to make it better until it's been in place for a couple of years. So you'll hear more about that later as they finalize the plans. Also, the workforce development, which is also through the COG, we have a one-stop shop in the old Social Security building out on Highway Number 9 before you get to the prison. Once the renovations for the Northeastern Technical Building and the old Windy City Building is completed, they will be moving their services there, so that will be easier for people to access, be a little closer to town, and for students who are looking to do resumes and job searches, those kinds of things. So that's very important. Make sure I have everything on my list. The sheriff didn't sign up, but I'd like to say that the sheriff's department, in conjunction with people in the community donating supplies, will have a back-to-school, you want to, please stand up, because I'll have all the details. Thank you. Yes. Yes. Good. Don't get it wrong.
Ms. Chairman, County Administrator, and to all of the county council, first I want to say, I thank y'all for what y'all have done for my department and myself. Thank y'all very much. Because we have been tracking the weather and tracking it really well, I had initially had Lindsey Park as the area for the back-to-school on the 18th, which is Saturday coming, where the weather says it's gonna be storming and raining, so we had to change that. It's gonna be done at, of course, the sheriff's office, y'all's office, it's just sheriff's office, it's gonna be done in that big conference room, be right there. We're preparing for about 300 hot dogs and drinks and chips for the kids, and some book bags. So it won't be done at Lindsey Park, and I have corrected some of that through the churches. Because we've checked the weather, and it's supposed to be pretty bad, and we're gonna have it, it's changed on the time, it's gonna be from 10 to 12. That's gonna be this Saturday at our sheriff's office, y'all's sheriff's office.
This Saturday or the 18th?
The 18th, isn't 18th this Saturday?
That's this Saturday, okay, got you.
Yeah, I thought, all right. That is this, yes, ma'am, that is this Saturday. And it's gonna be at the sheriff's office from 10 to 12. And while I'm standing, I want to say to all of the county council, and to the county administrators, and to the county, whoever, on the 18th of September, I spoke to some of the county council, I hadn't spoke to all of y'all, but I got all of you all together besides Mr. Gladon, and I wish y'all would let him know and I would reach out to him. On the 18th of September, which is next month, I'm going to have a full scare department meeting, I always have one on every quarter, and this coming up on the quarter, which will be the 18th of September, and I would love to have all of the county council, county administrators be there. The meeting starts promptly at 5:00, and we'll be preparing, I'm gonna have some food, we're gonna be prepared to start eating at 5:30. So if you gentlemen and ladies would get there at 5:30, we will be preparing to eat, and it will be, of course, chicken, and it will be drinks and tea and stuff. It's at no cost, but I put this on for the department to try to keep, of course, morale and to keep things going, and I would love to have the county council there, and the reason for that is, is because you gentlemen and ladies doesn't know the new deputies that's been hired by, of course, me and you guys and ladies are paying them. And I would love for you all to know who the deputies are that works for you all and myself, and as well as the administrator who have done such a good job. So again, I say to you, to Saturday coming, from 10 to 12 at the sheriff's office, your office, and I say to you, on the 18th of September, from the hour of 5:30 until, if you guys and ladies don't do, never come by and get a plate to go, I would love and be very humbled and appreciative to see y'all face in the place. It's you all's office, and it's mine's, and I appreciate what you all have done, and my department certainly appreciate it. So I ask if there's any way possible, if y'all would, I would appreciate it. And thanks again for all of you all for what y'all have done. Mr. Administrator, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more comments from council? All right. Thank you, meeting adjourned. Please sign this condolence card for Mr. Woods, for Mr. Glad.